Provisions, Vice Speaker, Vice Speaker Calvo, you recognize?
Okay, yes, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I have a First Amendment I'd like to provide to the members of the body. And, um, let's see. It is, says to add a new section to the miscellaneous provisions chapter. And this is revenue tracking report, Section 5 Revenue Tracking Report.
Okay.
And Section 5 of Chapter 5 of Public Law 28-150 is amended to read.
Does everyone have that?
Everyone have that?
On revenue tracking report, does everybody have that? Okay.
Yeah, again, this is at the behest of the administration. There were some issues with BBMR in regards to the language "close." And there was an interpretation of "close" meaning the end of the fiscal year. And, and with that, we've already made changes, I think, earlier on in, in Public Law 29-01, reflective of this change. So we're taking the word "close" out and putting the "end." To be very clear that this is not just for fiscal year ending, but this is the end of every month. And then there's been language also added, notwithstanding any other provisional law, such reports shall be submitted in written and electronic format monthly and shall be posted quarterly on the Bureau of Budget and Management Research's website. Okay, and that's my amendment.
On the Calvo amendment, any speakers? On favor of the Calvo amendment? No objection? Amendment passes?
The next amendment--
Senator Calvo, you recognize?
Okay, thank you. The next amendment, Mr. Speaker, is, Mr. Chairman, says, "Add a new section to the miscellaneous provisions chapter." And this is Section Blank Expenditures, Incumbrances. And the language reads, "The expenditures and encumbrance made against the carryover appropriation contained in Section 3, Part 1, Chapter 4 of Public Law 28-150 shall be charged against appropriations made in this act for the respective agencies." Again, this was made at the behest of the administration. It makes a lot of sense, because if you can recall what we've done in this particular bill at the request of the administration is to delete the appropriating for carryovers. Unfortunately, when you're halfway over through the fiscal year, there has been already a use of carryover authority, and that authority has been exercised by members of the administration in expenditures and incumbences. So what this would do, again, to allow for a balanced budget and not allow a double appropriation, this would charge whatever carryovers have been utilized so far in the fiscal year and will be charged against the current appropriation.
Okay, on the Calvo amendment, Senator Respeja.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I understand what the mover is intending to do here, and I don't really oppose the amendment, but I really want to generate some discussion here, specifically with the mover of the amendment, because it seems to me that the administration is acknowledging that in some form or another, the carryover appropriation amounted to cash. In the Pacific Daily News today, the governor's chief of staff said that the current budget is flawed. It's flawed because it recognizes carryover appropriations. Specifically, it says, "The budget lapses from last fiscal year to pay for executive branch operations. Those lapses are not worth anything because they do not have cash back to back them up." And it seems to me that this amendment kind of recognizes that in some, in one way or another, there was cash to back this up, because what the administration was after is simply the spending authority. And unfortunately, the cash collected was not enough to meet that spending authority, and this is why we're faced with this crisis. So I just want to ask the chairman what his thoughts are as to whether or not carryover provisions-- For me, I believe that carryover provisions and the use of lapses only works if you have a balanced budget. But if you have a revenue estimate of $457 million and you're only tracking $434, and you carry over as much as $33 million, Mr. Chairman, then obviously you're not going to be able to meet your day-to-day expenses. So the chairman would just touch on that. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Vice Speaker Calvo, would you yield to the--
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, what is, again, obvious, I've talked to members of the administration, that there has been a use of that carryover authority. And the number that was, was brought out as, and I think we have a member of the administration here to verify, but there's been about $8 million that have been used, utilized from the carryover authority for expenditures and incumbences. So obviously, there's budgetary authority and spending authority, and then there's cash management. And the administration has made use of that spending authority, that they, actually what they requested in, in the Public Law 28-149 and 150-- Excuse me. This was the request of the administration to use of lapsed monies, and that's why, again, there was a movement, an amendment placed in the budget based on the request. And again, with their request, the legislative body passed that provision into the budget. And of course, again, five or six months, six months into, or seven months into the fiscal year, there has been, I think, and again, John, I think it's about $7 million bucks.
Yeah, it's about, close to $8 million.
Senator Calvo, I mean, Respeja?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Glad to see that John Delarosa is here. Didn't the administration at one point use lapses to pay for increments?
I believe that was, yes.
In fiscal year 2006?
2005.
Five?
Five or four, I believe. I think it was five.
I understand what the amendment is trying to do here, and I'm, I don't particularly buy into the, into the argument that, that when you use the carryover position of provision, when you don't-- But if you have the spending authority to do these things, and the cash is coming in at a rate to meet that spending authority, then certainly the carryover provision works. But in this case, the, like I said, the budget was estimated at $457 million, and we're tracking at $434 right now. How then was the administration able to use as much as $8 million if they said that the current budget is fatally flawed?
We're clearly using FY07 revenues with FY06 carryover authority.
So what this amendment would do is it'll just basically JV those funds back to the general fund, and then if there's a new Bill 74, then it would appropriate money to fund those agencies for the remaining five months? This is just basically like a accounting thing, right?
It's really, exactly. It's really just saying, instead of having used that authority, it'll be replaced by a specific appropriation based on FY07.
Senator Respeja, there's a point of information by Vice Speaker--
This point of information, there's some issues that I have with OFB in regards to the budgeting and how we're, how we're trying to balance things out. So at this point in time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to move to withdraw the amendment. Continue on your questioning, Senator. I just wanted to, and again, if there's no objection, the body after is questioning, I am going to move to withdraw the amendment at this, at this particular time.
Okay, on the motion to withdraw the Calvo amendment?
No objections. I'll just wait till we see another amendment before I talk. It's no point talking when there's no amendment to talk about. But thank you before we draw the amendment.
Senator Respeja. Senator Donara, you recognize?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Ms. Chair, I'd like to move the amendment which has been passed out to the body with respect to transfer to the Guam Fire Police and Corrections. These agencies have a serious shortfall, and they're, this amendment will allow up to the lower of 1% or $250,000 per appropriation to the Fire Police and Corrections.
We'll wait a moment for the chair to get a copy of the amendment. On the amendment, is there any discussion? Without discussion, is there any objection? No objection, the amendment carries. Senator Guthbert, you recognize?
Good evening, Speaker and colleagues. The amendment before you adds a new section to Chapter 3 to read, appropriation to O.G. the sum of $40,000 is re-appropriated from the special funds deappropriated pursuant to Section 3, Part V1, Chapter 2 of Public Law 28-149, and Section 3, Chapter V1 of Public Law 28-150 to the School of Business and Public Administration, University of Guam, for the Commission on Modernization of the Government of Guam for the 21st Century and Beyond, for the implementation of the provisions contained in Chapter 12 of Title 5 of the Guam Code Annotated. Mr. Speaker, this is intended to be used to support the responsibilities of the School of Business and Public Administration that are referenced in the language of the amendment contained in the bill before us for the Commission on Modernization of the Government of Guam. It will provide the secretarial administrative support to the commission. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Anyone curious about the source of appropriation? Senator Respeja?
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I understand what Senators from ago I was trying to do, and I think it'd be more appropriately for me to ask the chairman of Finance and Taxation for listing of what these special funds are, because I know that he also wants to move an amendment that he probably do right after this.
Sure.
You know what? Let's take a one-minute recess.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'll withdraw my amendment pending action later. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any objection to withdraw the amendment, there being none? Any other? Yeah, let's proceed.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the amendment I have to offer, and it's a two-part amendment, and it says, "Add new sections blank blank to the miscellaneous provisions chapter." It says, "Section blank special funds deappropriations," and then after that, "Section blank additional revenues to general fund." I'm going to, I want to, I'd like to divide the amendment, and I want to, I want to--
Act on the second part.
--not deal with the first one until we have the breakdown for all the members of the body, and I want to work on the Second Amendment. And the Second Amendment reads, "Additional revenues to general fund, except as otherwise provided for in this act, exclusive of the Guam Fire Department fees, the Alien Labor Certification fees, and the fees deposited into the Better Public Services Fund. All revenues resulting from adjusted or new fees adopted in this act shall be deposited into the general fund for appropriations contained herein." Now, if you can ref-- okay. And it was pretty, it's obvious what this is about. It's allowing, we've had the fees, and now we need to get those fees. There's no appropriation authority, so with those fees, and of course, bearing in mind the amendments that have already been made protecting some of those fees, we're allowing for this thing now to be moved into the general fund for appropriations.
Can we take just a one-minute recess, please?
At the behest of the administration, and was written up by the administration. Obviously, there's some technical language here, corrections that need to occur, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna motion again to withdraw the amendment at this time.
Okay, on that motion, is there any objection? Objection the motion carries? Is there anybody else who has an amendment at this time they'd like to move? Yeah, but she can't move hers until you move yours, so I think we're all hung up on your amendment, no matter what, Senator Calvo. Senator Palacios, you recognize?
It's not an amendment, it's a point of information. We're gonna be going back to some of these pages for technical adjustment, because, you know, what we adopted, and then this is the so-called draft engrossed bill, it restored what was striking out. For example, in the mobile license, it already provided for the adopt, for the linkage into the rules and regulations that applicable now to own sale. But then followed, a sentence follows that that says that upon the implementation of the rules and regulation by the ABC Board, which is actually what we struck out, but it's contained in this so-called final--
Understood. We will entertain any, any amendments intended to clarify any conflicts between--
So, so I can do that then?
Certainly.
Okay, so, I mean, so--
I also noticed that there are people who wanted to make amendments to Chapter 6 who are not here tonight, so--
Okay, so I want a big excuse.
We seem to be at a point where we need to have this amendment put into final form, because other amendments are dependent upon its passage. So we will take a recess so that Senator Calvo and the administration can work out the, the language of the amendment. We are, we are in recess until the amendment is ready. Start with the, amendment has just been passed out, additional revenues to general fund. Senator Calvo, you recognize?
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Again, Mr. Chairman, what you have passed out is basically the same thing I said, identical in the earlier amendment proffered, but instead of having herein, we've placed it within this act. So, and I'll read it all if you care, if you'd like me to. Additional revenues to the general fund, except as otherwise provided for in this act, exclusive of the Guam Fire Department fees, the Alien Labor Certification fees, and the fees deposited into the Better Public Services Fund. All revenues resulting from adjusted or new fees adopted in this act shall be deposited to the general fund for appropriations contained in this act. Now, a mover of this amendment, but this, again, was at the behest of the administration based on their proposals to have a balanced budget. So, and then also, they have, there has been distributed to all the members of the body, the administration's figures--
One amendment at a time?
No, this is, this is backup information for everybody to look at what those special funds are. Anyway, that's my amendment.
Okay, on that amendment, is there any discussion? Without discussion, is there any objection? Without objection, the amendment carries. Second Amendment? Actually, the First Amendment.
Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the Second Amendment says, number one, and add new sections blank to the miscellaneous provisions chapter, and it reads, "Section blank special funds deappropriations. All revenues from special fund appropriations that have been automatically deappropriated pursuant to the provisions of 28-149, Chapter 2, Part 6, Section 3, and Public Law 28-150, Chapter 6, Section 3, shall be transferred to the general fund." Again, that will be used, again, for appropriations later on for a balanced budget. And this is, again, at the behest of the administration.
Senator Respeja, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, the Calvo amendment, essentially what it would do is it would take a list of special funds. We have a listing here, 47, maybe 48 special funds. And I'm gonna express concern here, and I don't think that this is something that we really need to do. In this list, it has the University of Guam to receive an additional $113,000 cut, GCC from the Territorial Education Fund. There's Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse from the Healthy Futures Fund, $73,498. And, and you know that the Department of Mental Health is currently under, going through a court case and to have to comply with some of their services for special needs. Number 15 here, Customs and Quarantine, the CNQ Fund, $408,374. This money, as you know, comes from the airlines, and the airlines currently are reviewing Customs and Quarantine to determine whether or not the 100% use of these funds are for operations of Customs and Quarantine. Department of Public Works Highway Fund Solid Waste Fund, $632,000, Mr. Speaker. People are paying on their tipping fees expecting their trash get picked up, and now if we take this money and swipe it into the general fund for general government operations, I think there'll be an uproar in our community too, if they know that their tipping fees is going to fund government operations. Guam Visitors Beer, Tourist, Attraction Fund, $740,000. The hotel industry charges a occupancy tax which goes, a hotel occupancy tax which goes in the tourist attraction fund to be used for GVB operations to market Guam as a tourist destination. I think if the people in the hotel row who were just in here the other day asking the legislature to quantify in how these fees were generated, I think if they found out that $740,000 of that money generated by that industry is now going to be used for general government operations. So, you know, this Calvo amendment is not the way to go. It's not something that we-- Maybe the chairman will yield. I keep calling this the Calvo amendment, but he keeps pointing to the administration. It's, I want the chairman--
What would you like him to do?
--to yield to a question.
What is the question?
The question is, is if this is something that he thinks is the most prudent thing to do as a mover of the amendment?
Does the person requested wish to yield to the question, which of course you always have the right to deny a yield?
Oh, no, I love, I'd yield to the question. Again, this has been, again, this is, this movement, amendment is--
You may want to wait until the chair recognizes you--
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead, proceed. Proceed, Senator Calvo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Again, this motion that I'm making is at the behest of the administration in regards to trying to find a balanced budget. Obviously, all the deappropriations you see here are a result also of the non-compliance of those particular agencies in regards to reporting requirements. And again, the administration, in order to provide for a balanced budget, has utilized a portion of these deappropriated funds from special funds to be, to be used or to be transferred into the general fund in order to provide for a balanced budget. But again, I will maybe, I will allow for the, the members of the administration to explain this in more detail, because I think there's a lot of room to wiggle here, because the imbalance is about $1.28 million, and the total amount deappropriated is $3.3. And, you know, again--
That's the case?
Okay.
I think what we'll do is we'll take a little recess here. I hadn't, wasn't aware of that little piece of information. Just take a recess, please. We're back in, the committee holds back in. Senator Ominko. ARU slash VCP?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to add a new section on Section 5 on Bill 74 as amended. And the amendment, of course, is being passed out right now. And this is just, you know, we talked here earlier about how we can be able to help the Attorney General's Office to actually get some financial assistance in terms of hiring somebody who specializes in tax and how, you know, this individual to more or less represent revenue and tax as well for the prosecution of any problems that exist. And the problem right now, as you can see, Mr. Speakers, that we have been granting so many amnesty for everything we're at revenue and tax. And so with this amendment, you know, there, this, you know, it sort of allows revenue and tax to actually put in their budget and, you know, amount of money for the Attorney General to provide legal services to her department. So that's basically, and this is introduced by myself with Ben Tangreen.
I made a, I made a terrible error, although I had said prior to the recess that I wanted another amendment to work on, since clearly that amendment required work. I should have given Senator Calvo the opportunity to withdraw his first. But if the body doesn't mind, let's go ahead and vote on the Ominko amendment and then give Senator Calvo an opportunity to withdraw his amendment, okay? On the Ominko amendment, is there any objection? Objection the amendment carries? Senator Calvo, you're recognized for the purpose of withdrawing your amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I know there's gonna be a lot of discussion, again, on, on the, on the amendment has been proffered through the administration. At this point, to allow for discussion, further discussion, I want to allow, and deliberation on some of the information that's been brought forward by the administration, I'm gonna withdraw the amendment at this moment.
Any objection to that? No objection to that? Fine, the motion carries. I know that there are a couple people who aren't here that do have amendments they want to move, but is there anybody else who is here? And Senator Guthbert, I realize you want to move your amendment, but it's dependent upon, in its current incarnation, it's depending upon a funding source that does not yet exist. So we should discuss it. If you want to keep your amendment as is, then it would need to be discussed after Senator Calvo's amendment is disposed of. Or you have the option as well of looking at your amendment again and trying to identify a new funding source that is not dependent upon the passage of Senator Calvo's amendment. I mean, you have the opportunity to consider those two options and figure out what you'd like to do. Is there anybody else who wishes to move anything at this time to Chapter 6? Okay, there being none, we will return to Chapter 6 to give Senator Guthbert, Senator Calvo, Senator Shimizu, I believe Senator Wampat when she returns, myself certainly-- Excuse me?
I think it's Chapter 5 now.
I'm sorry, my mistake. Chapter 5 now in the new engrossed version. We'll give an opportunity to do that for the, for the moment. Would someone like to make a motion to go to Chapter 2 so that you can move your revenue thing? Okay, we'll take a recess and make sure everything's clear, squared away first. We're still in Chapter 5. We're gonna give Senator Shimizu an opportunity to move his amendment, because it's been sitting in the docket for some time. Senator Shimizu, please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I bring the blessings of San Isidro de Patrocino off in the lawn to you, and thank you for allowing me to take the time to, what's that, carry out the premesa. So, Mr. Chairman, you know, I move to replace Section 9, Chapter 6, previously adopted by floor amendment number 33 on April 18, 2007, with the following section. I think this will be Section 107 on page 104 of the draft engrossed bill. Items 9, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32 of Chapter 26, Division 2, Title 11 of the Guam Code Annotated, are hereby amended as follows. And I will spare, I will spare the body of reading all of the sections. Ostensibly, what this amendment to the items 9, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32 is that, is to raise the, the threshold, amend the threshold of $50,000 up to $150,000, and also allow for the first $50,000 earned or received per taxable year be used as an exemption. Mr. Speaker, the reason why I bring this before the body to reconsider is ostensibly the fact that since that amendment was first adopted, there has been a number of people in the public who have come in from small business sector, the small business, not the huge business, to say that, look, if that amendment as passed was, is enacted, it would impact the small businesses that are earning at least $150,000 and below. And, and some of them, and I did, will become casualties of actually closing up their business. And, you know, when, when, I don't think any one of us here want to hurt the, the small business and cause them to, to close up. I don't think any one of us here would, would want to bank on taxes that will be paid, but ultimately will not be paid because of the business that's folded up, Mr. Chairman. So I am asking the body to reconsider that, because really, when you look at it, the, here in Guam, the small businesses are really the cornerstone of our economy. They hire, you know, at the low end, about six, half a dozen employees on up to 20. I can just imagine that if we do not consider this, this amendment, that it would put them in real harm's way, and we are-- real harm's way and we are actually killing the goading goose, you know, small, hard-working businesses. And when we do that, and when we do that, then the employees who depend on this small business to provide an income for the family will have to go elsewhere. And where do they go? They would come right back to the government. And, you know, that's the part that I'm more concerned about is when we hurt the small business. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move on this amendment. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. First off, does everybody have a copy of the amendment? Because I saw a lot of fidgeting. Okay. Senator Calvo, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, if the author would yield to a question?
Can you state the question?
The question will be, again, obviously, there has been in the earlier presentations by the administration, there's a certain revenues that have been pegged to allow for presentation of a balanced budget. And with that, the Dave Santos Act, there was a number figure given of about $2,333,000 based on the lowering of the ceiling, again, from $500,000 to $50,000. Now, obviously, with the change raising the ceiling up to $150,000, I'd like to find out what the impact is on, again, the budget and how that would change the revenue figures.
You're asking the author to answer that question?
Actually, I don't think he'd be the one. I'd probably have to ask the members of the administration.
Okay, so we have...
Yeah, so we have a revenue tax.
Who would be most appropriate? John, would you be most appropriate?
You were anticipating about a little bit over 2.3 million for the Dave Santos Act. So with this change, what are we looking now in revision of the revenue package?
I'm sorry, Senator. If you recall in yesterday's discussions in this, I think John calculated that we would net 1 million less for the remainder of the year. Which would obviously bring our revenues down and throw off the balance of the budget.
Does that answer your question, Senator Calvo? Okay. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Senator Blass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mrs. Chair, as the mover of the original amendment that basically brought the Dave Santos, the tax caps or the caps down in the original Dave Santos law from $500,000 to And I can appreciate the mover of this amendment and wanting to increase the cap to 150,000. And just so that it can be very clear with regards to what my original intent was, was to restore the Dave Santos Act or the provisions of the Dave Santos Act and the intent of the Dave Santos Act back to what it was originally intended for, to start to assist small businesses through incubation so they can get a head start or a start on business. And I'm of the firm belief, Mr. Chair, that anything higher than that, especially if it goes on for a period of time, can no longer be conceived or be perceived as an incubation period. But also if it is increased, it basically means then that the business is doing much better, that it's finally growing, and that in its growth, I think that there's an obligation that that business owner too helped to contribute back into the economy. So I just wanted to make that clear with regards to what my original intent was. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blass. Is there any further discussion on this amendment? Senator Pangolino, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I support this amendment. The Dave Santos Act, as originally envisioned and implemented, really was fairly restricted. And the idea was not only an incubation period, as the good retiring speaker mentioned, but it was an opportunity for businesses to defer the payment of taxes because it really becomes a deferral for a successful business that goes beyond the threshold that would be set in here. But it allows you to help you cover some basic operating costs, you know, for businesses at $150,000. You know, that 4% represents probably a phone system for one year or power bill for, you know, for the year. And it helps them meet some of the operating costs in order to be able to, in order to have the cash flow to reinvest back into the business. And when you reinvest back into the business, you're doing things, of course, that generate additional dollars in the economy. The basic tenet of economics is that, especially in the retail and service side, is the circulation of that dollar. In retail, it's the turnover of your inventory. How often do you turn it over reflects your profitability, but it also reflects in terms of the taxes that becomes available to the government with that turnover of inventory. And it was an opportunity to do that for those businesses that had operating costs over and beyond, for example, the service industries of single-man operations such as commission agents and so forth. In the original law, it did not cover those individuals. It did not cover certain activities where it had been now expanded so that it covered those individuals, and that's really where we've gotten some of the leakage. So I think that this brings it back a little bit more to that and maybe the tweaking that needs to occur in the Dave Santos Act because really, I think both the administration and this body feels that it's a good thing to have that incentive. It's an incentive that really is our local businesses. It's very, very few and far between that we find tax credits that affect local businesses. As you know, our QC program is almost exclusively off-island investments, and they don't... They get the tax relief. Our local businesses, your neighbor, my neighbor, that is in business and hires one, two, three, or four people, really has very little tax assistance, tax incentives available to him to ensure that he gets an opportunity to raise his business level and get some cash flow to reinvest back into the business. And this is the one single program that we have where a tax incentive is targeted to our local people to ensure that more of our local people get into the business. That, you know, we talk about individuals who have left SRF, for example, during the closeout. These individuals went out and some of them started businesses. And the Dave Santos Act, believe it or not, was a make it or break it for some of these guys. And some of these guys have made it, you know? And some of them have expanded beyond the threshold and now pour money back into the government. And some of them still need that $160 or that, you know, $50 or $90 a month that the Dave Santos means to them. That means they're paying a GPA power bill or at least two-thirds or one-third of a power bill. That's where this money goes. It doesn't go into a bank account, doesn't go into repatriation to off-island parent corporations and such. It stays right back into the economy. So in effect, you know, we may not get it for our own cash flow immediately from that business in terms of tax revenues available for government operations, but we get it in terms of the circulation of that dollar into the economy. The individuals, companies who take advantage of the Dave Santos Act, they're not putting this in bank accounts and leaving it there. They're circulating this right back into the economy. It's another weeks of inventory for a retail business. It's another month of power bill or another month of rent for somebody who has a service business. That's what this means, and believe it or not, it really helps. I've talked to so many people. I worked on the original Dave Santos Act with the late Dave Santos when, before it was introduced. And in effect, some of the stuff that has occurred with the Dave Santos Act have been expansion where we didn't envision that leakage. But this leakage in terms of tax revenues coming to the government, it's not the same leakage that you have with these QC's for off-island companies that repatriate those profits to parent corporations or pay for a subsidiary of a company back in the mainland of their inventory, pay it off-island so that money never even gets to Guam. This leakage leaks back into our local economy. And if that's really what this is, and I understand that the times are tough for the government, we need it now. $150,000, I think, is a little too low, but I'm willing to work with the administration and we come back, we reexamine this when time gets a little better. We go back and reexamine the expansion of the services that are covered under this so that we tighten it up a little bit more and maybe have an opportunity to raise the threshold so we go back to its more pure intent. But this money does not leave the island. It does not leave the economy. It gets recirculated right back into the economy. It doesn't get put away into a bank account, drawing a TCD and so forth. That doesn't give you that multiplier effect of expenditures in the economy. It is circulated in the economy because that's the type of people we're helping, people that need that money, that need the cash flow to make operating expenses and help cover some of those. And it really is a good program, and I think that this will... We won't see that leakage as much as we think we will because when that $1 million doesn't come to the government, it gets spent out there in some other area of our economy and we recoup the money back there. So I really support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolino, Senator Palacios, and then Speaker Ompinko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Chair, I rise in support of this amendment. This is similar to the amendment I offered a few days ago, the amount of $100,000. And I'd like to remind this body, again, Mr. Speaker, that this matter, it actually has two elements. One is to reduce the exemption from 50 to 40 and then the threshold. But the way I see this, really, the most important item here is the reducing of the threshold because actually that sets the eligibility for, I guess, for entitlement to the exemptions. What good is the exemption if a person is not eligible to, of course, to apply for that exemption? And so to me, the important thing is the threshold, and I think the $150,000 threshold is already, the remainder of the $500,000, which is $250,000 or rather, yeah, $250,000 is reduced. To me, that is more than 50% of the threshold, of the current threshold. And that is the major, I guess, sacrifice that is to be made, not so much a $10,000 reduction in exemption. And that's why I support this. At least a gradual or rather, a small amount of adjustment upwards would be still adequate and still show a sacrifice made by the small business community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Speaker Ompinko, you're recognized, followed by Senator Spisho.
No, thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I remember well, I remember when, before the bill was introduced to, you know, for the Dave Santos Act came about. And of course, the rationale for that is the, you know, to encourage a lot of small businesses to come about and get our people to more or less be in business. And so they set that up so that you'd be an encouragement to many. But really, what transpired is that we have big businesses that are making over $20 million or even $10 million a year, dividing up their companies in 20, 30 different ways so that they can take advantage of this act itself. And I don't blame them. Why not? But before, they only had one license to operate as a business. Now they got 20 to 30 business licenses to operate. And, you know, the intent of the law is to, not to do that, but to encourage our people to actually go out and set up their own business and be an entrepreneur. But it's slow in coming. There's some that did come. But then we have attorneys, of course, that, you know, sort of look at the law and interpret it accordingly that when you start a small business then, or get a business license, you can be an individual, but you can be a third individual at any given time. And of course, you need to have a lot of accounting, you know, personnel to take care of it. And because, yeah, there'll be a lot of paperwork involved, but nowadays, we do have the computers that actually with this write-up, you know, whatever documents that are needed to do the reporting with Revenue Tax. And for this reason, I would like to ask maybe John, John Camacho, if you... Mr. Chairman, to elaborate more in terms of people that are taking, you know, going in, that are in business right now, that do have how many different licenses to operate so that, you know, they will be able to take advantage of the Dave Santos Act?
The Dave Santos basically is very broad, and it basically gives practically every business the opportunity to qualify under the current, which is up to $500,000 of gross income. And looking at the different categories, you look at rental of real property, where it started way back, where it started first, the first $1,200 of exemptions for practically $100 a month. And then it widened up to service, then into commissions, insurance premiums, and so forth. And when they raised the threshold amount up to $500,000, we heard a lot of complaints that businesses where their income is 500,000 or 400,000 or 500,000, they were dividing the properties, for example, rental properties into separate owners or names, where the intention was basically to give the first $50,000 to one individual.
They may have the name, but they may still have the names that they... But they named their company differently, right?
Right.
With the same owner?
Same owner, but a different name or different company or a different name for a person who owns properties, for example, the mother, the father, the son, or the daughter. Those things are allocated so they can all fall into the framework.
Would you be saying then that this is circumvention of the law itself, which is legal, no?
Yes, because of the definition of a person, which is basically an individual or corporation or partnership. So if you have a big corporation and you name them differently or subdivide them, you have multiple corporations that will qualify for the exemptions. For example, you have a corporation which is pretty big, let's say a million or 2 million, and you start dividing that down to have those corporations go below the threshold amount of 500,000. So each corporation now would qualify for the exemption rather than not qualifying for the exemptions.
And if I remember well, you know, being here for the longest time, Mr. Chairman, the intent is not for that to happen. But of course, you know, when you set up a business, it's an entity and it... it's an entity in itself, and it's, many corporations, when they're set up, they become a person by law, they're recognized as a person with different names, but the same owners. And so, I'm, I'm kind of mixed right now in my feelings regarding this amendment, because if I remember, you know, being here for, since back in nineteen seventy-six, the intent really was not for that to happen, but it did, and I do not blame, blame the, you know, the people that have taken advantage of this, because it's within the law itself. But I think what, you know, is being done right now is more or less trying to, to stop, you know, the loophole, or to put away the loophole that have been there, and the amount of a hundred and fifty, I don't know. It is, it's, it's a big chunk of money, and I mentioned, I, I remember Senator Judy talking about a lot of the abuses that came about, and it's because, because of the existing law that, you know, has been there, and I think this is, this might be one of that. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Ompico. Senator Rospichio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I support the amendment, and really, I want to commend Senator Shimizu for moving such an amendment, and for listening attentively to some of the feedback that this legislature has been getting while we're in the committee as a whole. I think the fact that our people, business people at that, have a more, a little bit of an opportunity to really digest what these fee increases will do to the various businesses, even to your individual citizens out there. The amendment to amend the current structure of the Dave Santos Act, whereas right now it's a five hundred thousand dollar threshold, it'll move it down to fifty thousand, but rather than having the businesses avail themselves to four percent off of the fifty thousand, that was rolled back down to forty thousand, so any small business right now, when, when they were enjoying a two thousand dollar annual tax deferral, now be sixteen hundred. And so, many businesses have brought this to our attention, that they're now going to find themselves paying four hundred dollars, whereas they were not paying four hundred dollars. So, I think in our attempt here to try to generate as much revenue as required to run this government, doing this on those premises is exactly why the business community is up in arms, and I don't blame them. They see this legislative attempt to generate revenue on their backs, which ultimately may mean that this is going to be balanced, if it is balanced, on the backs of the employees. We spoke to many businesses, Mr. Chairman, over the last couple of days, and said that this two thousand dollars really is, it's, it's their power bill, or like the previous speaker said, it's their phone system for the entire year. And meanwhile, some people may think that this is not a lot of money, to those who qualify under the, as a small business, for a mom and pop store, they can go and repair one of the broken chillers, or go and buy something that they would need to operate their business, and, and we've always expressed concern that by moving it back down to fifty thousand, there are very little small businesses that would fit this description. I don't think there's a single mom and pop store these days, in today's dollars, that would qualify if the threshold was left at fifty thousand. So, I want to commend Senator Shimizu. I know that he's received some feedback, and, and has had an opportunity to do that because of his own experiences in talking to some people. Ms. Chairman, I think it's important that this amendment pass for the mere fact that at least it demonstrates in part that this legislature is listening to some of the feedback we're getting from the community, so I, I support the amendment.
Thank you, Senator Rospichio. On the Shimizu amendment, Senator Barnes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and, and I too want to chime in on this amendment and rise in full support of this, Mr. Chair. And I too have been visited by many small business entrepreneurs, most recently, just today, as I was making my, my rounds today at a couple of functions, dealing with, working with businesses and working closely together with some nonprofit.